A lot of them have fences around them now, chain link fence that they close off. Which is sad because you know, in my daydreams, that's where we played. You went to the school, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Can't do that anymore unless it's tough to fence, of course.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's a whole new world now. Uh, I don't know, I mean, it's 6:30, but I don't see home TV in here.
They mean that we've had a mute and change in our home TV staff.
Mm-hmm.
The communications manager, Brandon Yates, has resigned and they're interviewing for a new person, so I'm not entirely sure we've got a home TV crew tonight. Couple of their cameras are here.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, they're here.
They are?
Yeah, they're here, we're good.
They can operate it remotely?
Yeah, she just did it, yeah.
She was just here, yeah.
Do we wait for her to start, or?
Um, do you want to wait for Commissioner Primo?
Yeah, is he coming?
Uh, I didn't hear, but he wasn't, so.
Going anywhere in Meridian Township these days is a challenge.
It is.
Especially coming from the south.
Actually, you do that in Lansing. I mean, there's nowhere really that you can go right now where there's not construction.
Especially on the highway.
Absolutely.
It's period getting more fuckin' dollars. It's like, we need more money as soon as they get it, they're like, oh, we all these projects.
Some of these road crews guys are working weekends as well.
Yeah.
Forty hours in the weekend.
Yeah, they are.
Twenty on the weekend. And they've probably exhausted this point.
I am glad Grand River, though, does not have the divots that it had the other day, where you're like going two miles over and it's like boom, then two, you know, two miles over the next bump, boom.
All over Mill and the Road.
Yeah, uh-huh.
Doby Road?
Yep, yep. Oh, yeah, it was. I mean, it's hard enough at Doby.
They should have done with that by the end of the weekend, all the way up to Marsh Road.
Yeah, it's gotten a lot better for that, yeah. That intersection was rough. What does the little red light on the camera mean? That's, I was wondering.
Oh, that one must be.
Yeah. Uh-uh.
She was at this camera for just a minute.
Uh-huh, yeah, she was fixing the mic. So we have a quorum, right?
Yeah, we'd have to have a yes vote from everybody, though, in order to approve anything.
Do you think that needs three votes for it to be approved?
Yeah, so you'd have to have three.
Yeah, there's only three of us.
For, yep, the quorum.
Closed off the road, I take.
What?
Closed off the road, I take.
Oh, really? That's what we were just talking about, the votes.
Yeah. Let me go check to see if they're coming.
Okay, 'cause I just assumed get started.
Oh, wait, man. I don't know if he's coming or not.
Well, goodness, if we have a quorum.
Yeah, I was like, we have a quorum. And he can always, if Primo comes, he can always join.
He said that the, his road was closed off, so maybe he did put stuff in.
Oh, wow.
What road was that?
Between Lake Lansing and Haslet, Oakhamus Road.
Oh, Oakhamus Road, yeah.
Yeah, Oakhamus Road was closed.
Okay.
Is it really?
One direction right now.
The ready forces are.
Oh.
I think they'll be filming from that camera back there, if anyone.
Oh, so have we just kind of been chit-chatting while they've been filming us since 6:30?
Power link, power link. Didn't see any battle doll, please. Frank, I don't know how.
Okay, all right. Well, it is six, looks like 37 on the Meridian Township clock. I will call the zoning board of appeals meeting of the Charter Township of Meridian to order for August 17th, 2022, and take the role. Member Koenig.
President.
Member DeShane.
President.
Chair Field Foster is here, and I believe we also expect to see member Primo come shortly. Can I get an approval of the agenda, or are there corrections that need to be made?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Member Koenig, voting?
Yes.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes as well. So are there corrections for the minutes?
I just have this one.
I had one as well. I was like, I had one of them.
First page, if you flip it over, well, I printed on mine, double sheet. It says that present, it says that all five members are present, but an absent has your name on there as well. So I don't believe, I think you were absent, right?
Yes, I was absent.
So I would just make the correction to strike Vice Chair Field Foster from the
President.
Present listing of the attendees for the July 20th meeting.
All right, we will definitely make that correction. That was one that I noticed as well. And are there any other corrections, modifications to the minutes? All right, with that, we will vote on the modified amendments. Member DeShane?
Yes.
Member Koenig?
Yes.
And the Chair Field Foster votes yes as well. Do we have any communications before us today?
Yeah, so there's one for the second case, and we can address that when we get to that.
All right, is there any unfinished business? Nope, not seeing any, let's move to new business. The first case before us is ZBA case number 22-08-17-1, 419 Haslet. David and Kathy Myers at 419 Haslet Road. The variance is requested to allow an accessory building to project into the front yard located at 419 Haslet Road. Mr. Chapman, do you have any information for us?
I sure do. Good evening. So this is a request for a variance from Section 86, 565, subsection 1. No accessory building shall project into the front yard. So the applicant is requesting to allow an accessory garage to project into their front yard located at 419 Haslet Road. The property is approximately 7.73 acres in size and is zoned our rural residential. So the plot plan shows an existing approximately 1,536 square foot, single-family house that was constructed in 2021, and a proposed 24 by 24-foot accessory building. So Section 86, 565, subsection 1 does not allow the accessory building to project into the front yard. This garage will project 75 feet into the front of the principal structure, which requires a 75-foot variance. Also to note, there was a wetland delineation that was completed in 2021 for the wetlands that are located on the northern and southern portion of the property. The single-family home that was constructed is located approximately 30.9 feet from the 40-foot wetland setback on the south side of the property. That's all I have.
Is there anyone from the applicants who would like to speak? Please come up to the microphone, state your name and your address clearly so we can get that for the record, and welcome to the ZBA tonight.
Okay, hi there, my name's David Myers. It's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're asking.
I didn't know if you were.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay, I see. Our property, our house isn't on this picture yet, but it's right about where the number 419 is, right there. And we can't build behind the house. We built over close to the woods, and the front of the woods has a designated wetland right there. And we can't meet any setbacks on the east side, there just simply isn't room. And on the west end of the house is our propane tank, which we have to stay 50 feet from. So we can't have it there, and plus the drain field's in front of the house, so I couldn't drive across it. So we're asking, when we built there, I noticed both neighbors had their pole barns out front. I never thought nothing of it, but they're in the same situation we're in. And we're asking if we can build like a pole barn slash garage, not very big, 24 by 24. It'd be on the east side of the property, and roughly about 75 feet in front of the house. It's really the only place we have to put it. And both of our neighbors have the exact same situation, and they have pole barns in the exact spots where I'm at. Well, not in the exact spot, but on, you know, out front and to the east of their house. And it's probably, I mean, I'm sure it's because they're in the same situation we were in, or we are in. The building would be, the house is 700 and like, I forgot, 710 or 20 feet off the road. The building will be 600 and I don't know, you know, 50, 60 feet off. It'd be virtually invisible from the road, plus there's woods all between us and the road. And it just kind of goes with everything that's there, you know, what both neighbors have also. And it's just really the only place we have to put one. And we really need it because we have, with that 700-foot driveway, some big snow removal equipment, you know, a tractor with a big blower on the back, and lawnmowers and tractors, and I have nowhere to put the stuff, you know, without a building like that. The only other option would be stack some small sheds out there, and we have a brand-new home, and I don't want to do that. The building we want to put up is not big, and we want it to look just like our house. So it's, it would look, you know, it'd be a nice building. We're gonna side it, or, you know, it'll be steel siding, but the same color to match the house. It'll look just like our house, I want it to look nice. I don't know what else to say, it's my first time ever doing something like this.
You did well. Does anyone else have any comment? Ms. Meyer, you raised your hand, so I wasn't sure if you wanted to.
Just one of us.
All right. Are there any questions by the members on, for the applicant?
Is the house, you're not, you're, you're, there's an existing house on the property that you've purchased or built yourself, is that correct?
Yeah, we just had it built just this last year.
And I'm looking at Google Maps of the site, and was the older home torn down?
No, there was no home there. We've actually owned the property for a long time, since the 90s.
Okay. Must be an outdated map, then.
Well, it doesn't show the house on this map. It must be a picture was taken before the house was built or something.
Okay.
Both neighbors are there. Our house is, it's kind of hard to tell, I don't know what, like, what, up there, there's the number 419 in this picture, our address. The house is roughly about right where that number is, sitting in the picture, anyway.
Okay.
Maybe a little forward of that.
Member DeShane, do you have any other questions?
No other questions for this time.
Uh, member Koenig?
I had a couple.
You want to go, or you want me to go?
No, go ahead.
Okay, well, let me, let me ask staff the first question. I know the, the number two response that the applicant gave mentioned how they believe that the properties to the east and west, they had the same situation with those barns out in front. Do you know offhand, he mentioned that they may, or they believed, I think the word was believed, that they may have asked for a variance as well for those. Do you know off-tenth of hand if they have or not?
So, yeah, I actually looked into that. The property to the, let me see here, pull up the map, let me switch over. Okay, so this property at 425, I didn't see anything on our records that showed when that was built, and we didn't have a variance for that one. This one at 410 was built in 1984, but we also didn't have a variance that I could find on record either. So I don't know how it got there, to be exact.
Was that before or after the code came into effect?
I'm thinking the code was there at the time, yeah.
Okay, so it's either legal or non-conforming either way.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, looking at this, you know, I totally understand your constraints on your property. You kind of almost have like a flag lot, what they call it, just because of the shape of it. And, you know, with the wetlands, and you must have some fun trying to drive on your driveway in the winter, because that thing looks like you got water on both sides, or potential for water and ice and stuff trying to get back to your home. And in looking at your one diagram, I would say I'd have to agree with you that it might be difficult to put this thing in the back, especially because looking at that picture, the 419 is an accurate, or at least a rough estimate of where your house is, you'd have to tear down probably a bunch of trees back there. You know, the more trees you can save, probably the better. And your neighbors already have it, even though, you know, you're a separate case. I don't want to just base the decision on what your neighbors have, but they do have the same situation you have. So I agree that your, your property is a little constrained, and putting it where you did was probably the better placement. It looks like, you know, you have all that property over to the other side, but it might be blocking the front of your house, and you'd have to add more asphalt probably to get a driveway over there, it's just going to increase your, your building coverage, and that's not a good thing. So I think where you put it was probably the best place you could. I personally, I can just say on the record, I personally don't have an issue with this based on the way your neighbors look and the constraints, the physical constraints with your property with all those wetland areas. So that's, that's all for me, that's all I can say.
I do have a couple of questions. Does your house have a garage now, the house that you just built?
Yeah, it's got a two-car garage attached to it.
Where do you?
And we have three cars.
Where do you park the equipment that you were referring to now?
Right now, my one car is actually at my friend's house in his garage, because he's sick, unfortunately, and I have it stashed, because it's a car I don't like leaving outside if I don't have to. So it's actually at my friend's out in Langsberg, and he's keeping it for me. So I, because right now with the new home, we're using the tractor a lot, putting the driveway in, a lot of other work. So I need the tractor there at the house right now. So we have one of our vehicles and the tractor, and then there's like three or four attachments to the tractor, which they all, kind of, you know, they take up a lot of room quick, and that's pretty much got it full right there.
Okay, I don't have, well, I do have a question for staff, actually. So I think over the past few hearings or so, we've gotten a number of requests for putting garages or, or different buildings in the front yard. Is this something that we've talked about in the past as far as, you know, how to resolve this issue, or has this not come up?
I mean, it does come up occasionally. I don't think that it's at a point where it's, you know, a continual issue or anything throughout the township. They're usually pretty unique instances. I mean, the ones that we get, like, around the lake and stuff, those are all attached, not detached. So that's kind of a front yard setback issue and not really, you know, allowing some, an accessory building in the front yard. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Meyer.
Okay, thank you.
You, you can go ahead and have a seat, we appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this matter? No? All right, then we can go to board time and discuss the criteria. So, since you mentioned this is the first time you've been to this, we have five criteria that we have to go through. You sent us information on those five criteria, and we definitely appreciate your comments to help us make our decisions as we're looking to either grant or deny the variance. And so the fact that you put the work and the effort into providing that information for us is very much appreciated. So what we're going to do right now is basically kind of discuss what we think as far as how this situation applies to these different criteria, and at the end of that, we'll be able to take a vote. So, the first is unique circumstances exist that are peculiar to the land or structure that are not applicable to other land or structures in the staying zoning district. And these unique circumstances are not self-created. I would say that looking at the lot itself, and particularly where the, the wetlands end up, and particularly in the back and on the sides and the front, I mean, it is a very narrow lot as well as it's surrounded by wetlands that he cannot build on. So I do not think that the circumstances are self-created, and, and I do believe in this particular situation that it is unique circumstances. So unless there are any other comments with that, we'll go to number two. Strict interpretation and enforcement of the literal terms and provisions of this chapter will result in practical difficulties that would prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose. You know, I always get stuck on this one, I do, I always get stuck on this one. So before I say anything, member Koenig, I, I know you presented what your thoughts as far as kind of the direction you were leaning. Is there anything you would like to add as far as this criteria is?
I would just reiterate that the strict interpretation of the rule or the law and the zoning code basically says that you can't have any accessory structures in a front yard, period. And again, this lot being the shape of it, it's very narrow where the home is, and it's very constrained based on those wetland areas that you had mentioned. It's very difficult with that wooded area, especially in that wetland area in the back of the house, it's very difficult to not have a structure per se in the front yard, because the backyard is wooded and getting near that, that wetland area. So it almost, I don't want to say the word forces, that's not the correct term, but it almost allows the only possible location essentially in the front of that building, which would now be the front yard of that structure. So I can see the reasoning of strict interpretation of that rule, whatever it is, to something, 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 as being a hindrance to the property owner at this time. That's my interpretation of it.
Member DeShane?
I would agree, and in fact, I think any interpretation of this ordinance towards this parcel, I think, would be unfair. There are different types of rural residential lots. I've got some behind me off of Hatch Road, and they're very narrow. The houses are built close to the street, and you would not want to have a garage or an outbuilding in the front of those homes, so it would change the character considerably. In this case, you've got a very deep lot with woods around it. Really is a rural setting, and as the applicant pointed out, it would be, with all the trees in front, it would not even be seen from how the road. So I don't believe interpretation of this ordinance towards this parcel is applicable to begin with. So I'm inclined to grant the variance regarding the strict interpretation of it. In fact, it's not attached to the house. I mean, a lot of suburban lots have, if you will, a garage jutting well into the front, they are 10 feet or more, but they're attached to the house, they get, they get by that. Are they also a little bit in, not in compliance with this notion that you should be, not have a building in the front yard? No, they're not, because they, they just happen to get by because they attach that garage to, some way to the house. So I don't have a problem with number two criteria either.
So, and I wanted to, I wanted to hear where both of you were coming from. And one of the reasons I was asking the question is, especially if there was a garage on the house. I mean, typically we're like, well, okay, you have a garage to, to store the cars or whatever else. But in looking at this particular property, I, I think where I lean more towards agreeing is the fact of the shape of it, there's, there's not really that much room. But also the size of the lot, given the fact that any addition that is added to this is not going to be seen from the road, it's not going to be taking away from the character of the surrounding parcels, there's nowhere else to put it. So I, I would, I would agree. And given the fact that you've got to have some way to take care of that lot, just given the, the character of it, it makes sense to me that there would definitely need to be an addition added so that you could store that property. Number three, granting the variance is the minimum action necessary that would carry out the spirit of the zoning ordinance, secure public safety, and provide substantial justice. I think we've kind of talked about that as far as the necessity of having the pole barn erected and the fact that, at the end of the day, they're putting it where, the only location that it could be. So I believe that it is the minimum action necessary to carry out the spirit of the zoning. Granting the variance will not adversely affect adjacent land or essential character in the vicinity of the property. I think we spoke to that as well, given the size, the location of the property, the fact that the neighbors on both sides have very similar characteristics and also have pole barns that are in front, that there's enough space that is distance between the road and other properties. It's not something that is out of character. I think there is no adverse effect to the adjacent land or the essential character. And number five, granting the variance will be generally consistent with the public interest and purposes of the intent of this chapter. At the end of the day, we do want landowners to be able to take care of their property and have the means in order to store the equipment to do so. So you purchase the land, and I think we can meet all five criteria. So unless there is anything else, we can take a vote. So is there a motion to approve the variance for ZBA case number 22-8-17-1, 419 Haslet Road?
So moved.
Second.
So now we'll take the vote. Member DeShane?
Yes.
Member Koenig?
Yes.
And Chair Field Foster votes yes as well. So Mr. and Mrs. Myers, your variance has been granted. And I believe you can follow up with staff and get whatever the specifics are to move forward, but I hope you have a great evening. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Appreciate it a lot.
Thank you for everything you provided for us, we appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Thanks for going first.
Okay, with that, we are moving on to our second variance, ZBA case number Okay, with that, we are moving on to our second, uh, variance, ZBA case number 22 dash eight dash 17 dash two, 6078 Porter, um, Craig Lanell?
Yes.
Um, and sixty, uh, sixty-eight, seven, uh, 6078 Porter Avenue in East Lansing is requesting a variance to allow an accessory building, garage, to project into the front yard located at 6078 Porter Avenue. Mr., oh, um, Chapman, would you like to, uh, brief us on this variance?
Yep. So I know I said that this was a unique instance, but we have another. It's the same. So, um, so the applicant's requesting a variance for, from section 86565 subsection one, no accessory building shall project into the front yard. Um, so the variance is to allow the accessory building to project into the front yard at 6078 Porter Avenue. The property is approximately .22 acres and is zoned RB, single-family, high-density. So the survey shows the existing, uh, twenty-one thousand, or 2,139 square foot non-conforming single-family house that, uh, according to our assessing department records, was constructed in 1944. So this house was built prior to, uh, our current zoning ordinance. The applicant is proposing to construct a 24-foot by 30-foot accessory building in the front yard, uh, which is not allowed by our zoning ordinance. This garage will project 30 feet into the front of the principal structure, requiring a 30-foot variance. And also, as noted, the, um, there's a letter that was no objection to this case. And I also spoke to a neighbor across the street who, um, I didn't hear anything from either, so she didn't have any issues.
Okay. Um, Mr. Lanell, would you like to, uh, share with us information on your variance request? And please state your name and address for the record, please.
So my name is Craig Lanell. I'm at 6078 Porter Avenue in East Lansing, 48823. Um, I really am glad that you went first. Um, so I'm not sure exactly whether to go through some of the criteria answers that I gave, or take you through the thoughts that I had up, up until that point. I'm not sure what's appropriate, if you want to open discussion those.
Whatever you feel comfortable with, keep in mind that we will definitely ask you questions as, as we go. So if you would like to kind of, uh, give us your thoughts as far as why this is needed, um, and the restrictions you feel that you have resulting in you coming here, and then if we have questions, we can follow up with those. And then if you want to walk through what you believe are the answers to the criteria, which you, you did provide, and thank you so much.
You're welcome.
For that information, um, you can do that as well. The floor is yours.
So, uh, if you look at the, the plat there, you'll see that there really is no access to the back of the property. On the south side, there's a setback of about two and a half feet, give or take, um, from when the house was originally constructed. And on the north side, there's about a 10-foot setback, but there's a huge multi-trunk tree right there that's at least five feet in diameter. Um, and then the backyard is only 26 and a half feet deep, so there's no turning radius or anything that you could get a garage into the back and maintain any type of setbacks back there from the back of the property. So what we looked at doing was putting in a garage up front. Now, the very front of the house is a long bedroom with two windows that face the street currently. So we decided, we, oops, we decided we would detach the property, or the structure, from the house, and then in working through the, uh, I'd really like to build a bigger garage, to tell you the truth. Um, I come from having multiple vehicles and things like that. Um, I pared it down a lot, but in trying to maintain the 35% front yard coverage, I ended up having to move the house 30, or the structure, the garage, 30 feet in front of the house for the back wall of the garage. And that shortened the driveway apron and everything, and maintains a below 35% coverage of the front yard for the structure and the driveway. This is a two-car garage, um, looking to store things like ATV, you know, that's what, the depth, they only had a 24-foot depth. The depth that I'm looking at, storing ATV, patio furniture, things like that, so that I've got storage. There really is no storage in this house at all. We've got racks all over the kitchen instead of cabinets right now where we're storing some fucking stuff. But, um, if we want to jump back over into the detached, the, uh, the sum, well, I put a summary up here up front to show you that breakdown of the 35% coverage. And also contained in the responses to the criteria as well, you'll note that there's not a real conformance to the setback from the street of the houses on the street. For example, this garage will be about five and a half feet in front of my neighbor to the south, but it'll be 22 feet behind the front wall of my neighbor to the north. So, so I, you know, we tried to make it as conforming as possible, but there really is a wide variety of setbacks in the neighborhood. This is a narrow lot. I included a picture of the garage. It's basic, um, pole barn structure-type metal garage, two roll-up doors and a pedestrian door in the back. I would, um, guess like to jump over to the variance application, um, responses I gave, um, based upon the discussions that, that we heard. Sure, go ahead. Quick question before you go on to that. Okay. What is the current siding on the house and what will the siding on the garage be? The current siding is a vinyl siding. It's blue and horizontal. That's what I intend to put on the garage as well. And if it, the siding's a little bit old and, on the house, it's a little old and there's hole punches and a little bit of variance in the coloration. Looks like they painted certain areas at certain times. So my intention is to get a garage siding that matches as close as possible to the house, and then if need be, go ahead and paint the house. Not the garage, but paint the house.
To match.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's funny, this house, I grew up in this neighborhood, um, and I went to a birthday party in third grade at this house with one of my classmates, and I didn't even know it. But a lot of my classmates that I went to school with in elementary school still live in the neighborhood. And they're all, "Oh, you're in Ricky Torres's house." And I go, "Oh, it is, really?" So there's a lot of people that I know that still live there, and they all know that house. It's like the only house that's set way back like this. And, "Oh, you're in the blue house that's set way back," you know? So I wanted, I wanted to keep that, that, uh, you know, memory for everybody, at least to an extent.
Wait, wait, just one question. Um, so, just so I'm understanding correctly, there is not currently a garage in this house?
No, and as near as I can tell, there never was a garage there. When I spoke with one of the, uh, members of your staff, I, Mr. Christmas, I believe, he mentioned that he thought, um, coming straight up to the house, he thought that that was a converted garage, except it's on a raised foundation. So I don't believe they would have put a garage in that location with a raised foundation there. So, um...
So there's no parking whatsoever?
No covered parking whatsoever.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so, um, I know you had some information on the unique characteristics, and I was actually surprised to see that there was another request for variance to put a garage out front for another property, because it does seem a unique scenario where I think everybody in my neighborhood could have access to their backyard with a vehicle. I don't. In regard to, um, this, the, uh, number two, granting the variance about practical difficulties and so forth. So there's, there is, as I mentioned, no covered parking at all on the property, so that means there's no storage for patio furniture. Um, there is a very small basement inside the house that contains furnace, coal chimney, hot water heater, air conditioning unit, and all the, the piping and vents. It's a pretty short, um, ceiling in there. So we really don't have any storage other than what we will hopefully create, uh, create I do think that having this garage does conform to the look of the, of the residential neighborhood. It doesn't, excuse me, doesn't change it as far as, um, um, you know, creating an unsightly property when you drive down the road. You're gonna see a nice, well-maintained property that will be setback again, you know, as conforming as we can make it. Let's see. Oh, so number three, um, and I don't have, I do here somewhere, but number three, the criteria, number three, um, one of the things that I noted in my response is that the street is only a 22-foot width, and we have no sidewalks in the area. We also have culverts that run along the sides of the street, so parking in the street, it becomes an issue, especially if you have two cars on either side of the street at that point in time. Um, and we do get, I, I haven't figured it out yet, but we get quite a bit of traffic coming up and down my street. I, I'm not sure exactly why, um, whether, uh, we don't have a traffic light at either end, but maybe people are cutting around the light on Lake Lansing Road and coming up through to get on Birch Row. I, I'm not quite sure yet. But we do get more traffic than I thought we would get on the street. So that's one of the other reasons we'd like to be able to park off the street and secure the vehicles from, I, I haven't lived here in a long time, but rain, snow, hail, I'm not used to that. Um, let's see. Number four, let's just run through this really quick. Uh, um, yeah, that's with the setbacks and stuff. And then with regard to, uh, the safety conformity, security issues, um, I, I don't see this changing the character of the neighborhood in any way, shape, or form. So I'm hoping that, uh, that I've given you enough information. If you have any questions, I would happily stand here and give you my best opinion on it.
All right, thank you. Um, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Lanell?
One more question. How long have you owned the property?
Uh, we moved in in April. I bought it in February.
Okay.
So, yeah, I, I'm a 12-minute walk from my mother, who's 88 years old, and my father passed away last year, so I retired and moved back here, and I'm having, I feel like I've won the lottery. I mean, that walk 12 minutes to my mom? Hey, that's great. So...
Well, welcome back.
Thank you.
Mr. Koenig, any questions?
I don't have any questions per se. I mean, I just have comments, but I can, I can wait.
All right, well, um, then we have no further questions. And with that, we will move into, uh, board time to discuss the variance. And I'm sure since you were sitting there, you understand how the process works and, and the discussions that we will have going through the criteria, but thank you so much for outlining all of the information and putting all of this work into answering the questions for us. We greatly appreciate that.
I was happy to do it. It gives me an opportunity to think as well as to why and what the need is.
Well, definitely. Uh, it is not something everyone does, and so it is always appreciated when, uh, we have an applicant that, that takes the time to do that. So with that, we're opening up. Um, comments? Member Koenig?
Putting me on the spot.
I am.
Well, I could say, um, the first thing that I noticed with this is the similarities with the previous interesting, uh, variants, and we had two of them on the same table like this, requesting the same variants and the same, same law. Um, the, the biggest difference I saw with your property versus that one is that, uh, your property isn't really unique to the area. There's lots of other properties around. You have the same shape and same square footage. However, as you mentioned, you know, even that picture shows, the one thing that is unique with your property is it's an older structure, and it is setback so far. Even looking at this, I don't know if you provided this or if the applicant did.
I had it from staff.
Which is great, because I was looking at Google Maps before I got here, and thanks staff for providing this. You can see pretty clearly, your building is probably one out of the nearest 50 that's pushed farther back than 20, 25 feet from the road. So you're really, do have that constraint, similar to the previous application to where your backyard, you have a lot of trees back there, it looks like, and you really don't have a lot of room. You could put an accessory structure back there, like a shed, something like that. But in your case, you're not requesting that, you're requesting a garage. And I feel like all of your neighbors, when I went up and down the street there and looked, most of those houses have garages, you're entitled to a garage as well, in my opinion. So it'd be a little hard to fit a garage in the back of your house based on the constraint and the location of your, of your home on that property. So that, to me, was the biggest difference that stood out, and I'm sure the other board members have their comments on it as well. Um, so I, I totally understand of wanting to put the garage, in this case, the accessory structure in the front of the house. You really don't have much of a choice based on the location and constraints on your property with the current location of the home. Uh, appreciate the fact of you trying to keep the amount of coverage under that 35%. So that's, we applaud you for that and, you know, abiding by that and not requesting a variance for that, because that's, that would have been a whole nother ball of wax you have to deal with and requests from the board, and we certainly appreciate you in keeping your, your, your coverage and your water runoff and everything below the, the maximum standard for it. Um, the size of the garage really, to me, um, doesn't matter per se. I understand it needs to be big enough to hold one or two vehicles. If you have a wife or a significant other or a family member, someone staying with you, you probably need space for at least two vehicles in there, um, covered. So the size of the garage isn't really the matter. The location I kind of questioned is up front, but I understand, you know, you don't want this thing to be right in front of your house and block your view and block your light and your serenity and trying to look out on the street with your neighbors. That would probably be a big difference between you and your neighbors, not having a lot of light blocking your view. So I understand the need to push it farther forward. And it looks to me, you know, you tried your best to keep this within the realm of the other structures, your two neighbors' houses, kind of, if you almost take like a plane line and draw it, whoosh, kind of at an angle between the two houses, you would almost be right on there. So I can appreciate that fact. So in all, I know I'm rambling, but I'm just trying to state as many facts I can for the record. I, again, just like the first one, I don't see an issue with this per se with granting this. Um, I feel you do have a unique enough circumstance with your property and location of your house to where I think this could be warranted. So, that's all. Thank you.
Member DeShane, any comments?
I would agree with the comments made. Um, I'm supporting this variance as well. It is unique circumstances. Uh, there, it is unbuildable in the back and a narrow lot, make it impossible to build on the side. Quite honestly, when this neighborhood was built in the 40s, garages weren't common, and, and people didn't have more than one car, uh, many, and now they have two and, and other equipment to store, so a covered parking is becoming a necessity rather than an option. Um, I appreciate the applicant giving us the answers that he has, and also appreciate your attempts to, to limit the size of it as well to stay within our other, um, areas of compliance. So I'm supportive of this variance.
I agree as well. Um, and so with that, uh, unless there are any other comments, I will go through the, uh, the criteria. Okay, so first one, unique circumstances exist that are peculiar to the land or structure, that are not applicable to other land or structures in the same zoning district, and these unique circumstances are not self-created. I agree with everything that was stated, particularly given the features of the neighborhood and the fact that you have absolutely nowhere to put a garage in the back of your house. Um, it, it's narrow and the location, um, of the tree makes it improbable for you to put any garage structure, um, there in that location. And clearly, the house was there long before you moved in, so it was not self-created. Uh, strict interpretation and enforcement of the literal terms and provisions of this chapter will result in practical difficulties that would prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose. Um, at the end of the day, this is Michigan, um, and we should all have a garage. Um, so, um, I, I do agree with, uh, what both members, Koenig and DeShane, has indic- have indicated as far as the practical difficulties that would result in not granting this variance and the fact that you literally, um, and, and you phrased, um, I think, the practical difficulties very well by indicating the width of the street, um, the fact that there are no sidewalks and the general safety of, of your, um, assets and wanting to protect them from the weather. Granting the variance is the minimum action necessary that would carry out the spirit of the zoning ordinance, secure public safety- of the zoning ordinance, secure public safety, and provide substantial justice. You went out of your way to make sure that you were adhering to the other ordinances by putting the minimum-size garage that you could to make sure that you had everything that you needed, but also were not coming to us asking for another variance. And so we are very grateful of that, and so we definitely appreciate your efforts in providing the minimum action necessary. Granting the variance will not adversely affect adjacent land or the essential character in the vicinity of the property. As noted, we did have those that provided comments, that there was no opposition, as well as not hearing from others in the neighborhood, and just based on the comments that you provided, as well as people, you know, you're familiar with people in the neighborhood, you're trying to keep the character of what the neighborhood is used to for the past several years. So I do not believe that granting the variance will adversely affect the adjacent land. And number five, granting the variance will generally, will be generally consistent with public interest and the purposes and intent of this chapter. I think we've covered all of those in several different comments that have been made here. And so unless there are other comments to be made, then can I get a motion to approve ZBA case number 22-8-17-2, 6078 Porter, East Lansing, Michigan, 48823, for the variance to allow an accessory building to project in the front yard?
So, support.
All right, with that, we will take a vote. Member Koenig?
Yes.
Member DeShane?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes as well. Mr. Lanell, congratulations, your variance has been approved. I hope it was not painful.
Not too much. I do want to comment, because I haven't been back here in quite a time and having lived in other parts of the country. I got my opportunity to vote, I had an opportunity to tell every volunteer at the voting that, you know, I appreciate their volunteering, because not everybody does. And I offer the same to you. I know you're not volunteers, but thank you for serving. Thank you for serving, and thank you for serving. And you and I have talked a little bit on the phone and in person, and thank you for all your help as well.
Well, we appreciate your comments, and thank you for returning, and I'm sure your mom appreciates you being home.
She's a talker.
I am sure. Well, and our condolences for the loss of your father, but.
He lived a great life, and not having him around is not fun, but he lived a great life.
Okay. Well, enjoy your new garage and enjoy your mother, and have a great day. Thank you for coming. All right, with that, we will move on to other business. Any other business before this evening? No other business? Are there any other public remarks? Seeing none. Board member comments?
None.
All right, no comments. And so with that, it is, as my dad is calling me, it is 7:25, and I don't know if I need to move to adjourn the zoning board of appeals meeting for August 17, 2022, but I hereby adjourn it.
Support.
Very good. All right.
Well done.